All right, we have a quorum. So it is 6:45, so I'll call the meeting to order. Tracy will be zooming back in as her internet connection allows. So first up, we have the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you'll join me in rising for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And that brings us to the roll call, and I don't see Tracy back yet. So I'll go ahead and call the roll. Vice President Schaffner.
Here.
Secretary Slager, working on her presence. Treasurer Gilmore.
Here.
Trustee Vanderheide. Trustee Revard.
Here.
Trustee Bowser.
Here.
President Reed here. Thank you, and we've established a quorum. We'll move on to the adoption of the agenda, and I would entertain a motion for as presented.
So moved.
Support.
Is there any discussion? Having none, Vice President Schaffner.
Yes.
Secretary Slager. Oh, she's coming back on. Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Trustee Vanderheide. Trustee Revard.
Yes.
Trustee Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed, yes, the agenda is adopted as presented. And that brings us back to or down to gratitudes. So I'd open the floor for anyone to share a gratitude. Welcome back, Tracy.
I'll jump in there. I would say that I am grateful for the vaccine because right now my wife has her first vaccination shot. And we're kind of in limbo at the moment. For the second one, we had somebody in our family test positive. So we're kind of in that quarantine mode at the moment. But thankful for things moving forward and thankful for all the staff and their support and working through all of that. So there you go.
What else?
Yeah, I'd just like to.
Please go ahead.
Mr. Revard.
I'd just like to thank Chris for all the work he's doing on the financial side with the with the bond stuff. If you look at his presentation tonight, I'm sure it's very exciting to most of us. But it's in-depth work, and it has to be done. And you have to present it to us and control it, and I appreciate that. Thanks so much.
My pleasure. It will be riveting, I hope.
Yeah, and I'm just grateful that we've entered into another month and we're in person. So we're making progress. And the numbers, you know, I don't know if you had a chance to look through the Red Hawk Weekly from this morning, but our numbers are trending in the right direction. Positivity rates are below 5% now. Our cases in our community are less than that of the average for the county. And so that's a positive sign. So we're really, we're heading in the right direction with numbers. So if we can only keep it up, we can remain in person.
So I'd like to say I'm grateful to Scott, working with all the other superintendents, to support the athletes and the extra action to get back to play, which will bring, hopefully bring our next extracurriculars back, and it'll set a nice trend. So thank you for all that collaboration that you were involved in, and that was extra work. So we appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'll second that. It's nice to have the kiddos back playing sports and trying to resume some sort of normal life.
Okay, we'll move on. We have our high school representatives with us. We have Mia Cooper, and I don't know if Jade is here or not. I think Mia, are you running alone tonight solo?
I was supposed to be with Jade, but apparently not.
All right, it's all you.
Okay, so for the past, or last week, we had a part of a spirit week, and we're continuing it this week. So like Monday was pajama day. Tuesday is going to be hat and scarf day, Wednesday class colors, and Thursday is like pink and red for Valentine's Day, just so we can have like students get excited about midwinter break and just get them looking forward to something because like right now is a really difficult time with COVID and everything. And we've also been collecting donations for City Impact. We didn't get as much as we had hoped, but we did it by using the Super Bowl. And so we had two jars, one for the Buccaneers and one for the Chiefs. And whoever they wanted to win, they would put money in their jar. So, yeah.
Okay, thank you for doing all those things to keep everyone's spirits up. And I'm sure it helps the staff too.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Mia?
Um, thank you for your hard work.
Yeah, I'm curious which team won the most money?
I believe it was the Chiefs that won the money.
Misty, did you want to say something?
Just I appreciate all your hard work, but do you have a list somewhere? Because you said you didn't get as much as what you were hoping for. Is there, what do you still need? Is there certain items that maybe we could put out there and still get?
Um, I'm not sure. I would need to talk to my like president. We were just collecting money donations, not like food. So, yeah.
All right. Any other questions for Mia? All right, thank you for joining us, and thank you for filling us in. Keep up the good joy and learning work. You're doing good.
Of course, thank you.
All righty. Okay, moving on to our consent items, which we've had in review. I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Support.
Okay. Vice President Schaffner.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Trustee Vanderheide. Trustee Revard. Trustee Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed, yes, the consent items are approved as presented. And we're at discussion. And first up for item A, we have the Red Hawk Online Fall 2021 Planning with Jen.
It feels a little strange to be saying 2021 Fall Planning, but we have been busy considering the data set that we have in front of us. And I wanted to give you an update on the direction that we think we're heading now and also acknowledge that when we think we're heading in a direction, COVID sometimes throws a wrench in it. So just to be mindful that this is our recommendation at this time and just an update for you in order to kind of hear the process we've been going through. So I'm sharing my screen with you. And you do have these slides as well. Whoops, there we go. So just a review at the K8 level. We, this year for our online option, offered curriculum through Savis and supplemented with many of our Cedar Springs Board-approved materials. It was taught by Cedar Springs teachers, and we had around 400 students in the first semester. That number has gone down slightly in second semester. But really, since we just finished first semester, we're reporting our data based on that first set of data from first semester. The cost of that was around $70,000 in materials cost. And at 912, we used Graduation Alliance, and that was taught by Graduation Alliance, but mentored by our own Cedar Springs employees. We had around 340 students between the high school and new beginnings who participated in that. And our cost was about $235,000, we project for the school year. And that's projected because it's a monthly fee that we pay based on the number of students who are participating in the credits that they're taking. So just that's a broad overview of what we offered this year. And just a reminder that we did that, obviously, as a result of the COVID situation and kind of the emergency that we were in. So as we look ahead, I wanted to share the process I've been taking this year with our various different teams. So we sent out a parent survey to anyone whose student was an online student in the fall during first semester, and we received 167 responses back. I also sent a survey to teachers to collect information from anyone who was a teacher in the online programming from first semester. I started collecting achievement data at the semester break to see how are our students doing in reading and math when we look at middle of the year here where we are. And then our administrators pulled together grades, credit, and attendance data for us to look at. And I'll share some of that tonight. In addition, a select group of us have been exploring other content providers, ranging from a Pearson product to Michigan Virtual to Edge Annuity, just to take a look at what else might be out there when we're not in such an emergency to be able to make a more thoughtful plan going forward and really think about what would be the highest quality that we could give if we were going to continue with an online option. Today, I met with our online teachers, and we did what's called a SWAT, which stands for strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats in looking at both the set of data from the parents and the set of data from the teachers. And then they also added their own perspective in a two-hour conversation that we had this afternoon and really some interesting information that I was able to add this afternoon to this presentation to share with you. And we're at the point where I'd like to make a recommendation going forward into the fall, actually into the spring, so that we're prepared for the fall as our secondary students begin scheduling in the next week or so. And we want to make sure that we have those options available, at least an idea of what we're going to be spending our time and our energy researching. So I first want to share some of the wins that came out of the conversation from the teachers today. They shared, they looked at first the strengths from what the parents said and what their experiences have been. And this is a set of what they shared as the biggest strengths or wins that we have experienced so far this year. They've had many positive one-on-one interactions between teacher and student or teacher and parent. The parents, from what we see in the data set, feel like their students are mostly motivated and engaged. The parent survey showed that we are offering the right amount of support in most cases for those who are engaging. And we were able to sort by students who are engaging and students who are not as engaged. So when students are engaging, we're offering the right level of support. The access to the materials, an added benefit of having Canvas as a platform and the ability to record lessons, is that those materials are available around the clock to families. So that's one of those hidden benefits that we wouldn't have seen pre-COVID. That is something we could capitalize on going forward, even for in-person students to have around-the-clock access to their content. The online teachers have seen a drastic increase in parent communication and the ability to connect more frequently with parents. And I just want to put a plug in for how hard these works are, these folks are working. They are working around the clock, and they have been so adaptable and flexible to meet the needs of something none of us could have imagined a year ago. I mean, when you think back to February of last year, this wasn't something that was on our radar. And these teachers have really stepped up and learned a lot and had some specialized training. And then in addition, they've gained some huge technology savvy, as have students. So when we hear that students are falling behind, we can say, well, that might be true about what we used to measure, but we can now measure some new things, including their ability to connect with technology. And our students are definitely growing in that regard. So those are some of the wins I wanted to be sure to have in front of you today as we look at this future. And I'd like you to think about whether this data set shows success or not. So we have about 11% more students falling behind in reading at the K5 level from the beginning of the year to the middle of the year. So think about that trajectory where they began at the beginning of the year. They're dipping, more students are falling behind. Our in-person K5 students are experiencing an average of 26.9 points of growth on the Acadians reading measure that we use for progress monitoring from the beginning of the year to the middle of the year, while our online students are experiencing only 11.2 points of growth. So that widens the gap as the year goes on. The trajectory for in-person students is greater than that for our online students, which would create quite a wide gap by the end of the year. And if we went into a second or third year, that trajectory would be expected to continue. The math progress for in-person versus online students is very similar. There's not much of a difference between those two sets of students. And when we look to the high school, 16.7% of our high school online students are missing 10 or more days of school. And when we think about how we measure success in terms of attendance, usually in a normal year, we would expect that five days out is the threshold for tipping into the at-risk category. We're talking about at the middle of the year. 16, almost 17% of our high school students have doubled that by the middle of the year in an online setting, where we would expect that they would more likely be able to connect regularly. And knowing that their in-person peers have the complexity of contact tracing and possibly having to miss school because of that, there, the number of students missing 10 or more days is at 9.8% there. And I would have expected that to be greater for the in-person students just because of contact tracing and those kinds of things. So that's the first set of data I have. I have several slides to go through that are about this success rate. When we look at the number of courses that were taken at the high school level in an online setting, 16.4% of all of those courses earned no credit. So when I think about progress towards graduation, that doesn't bode well for that set of students. 10% of online students at the high school and 20% of online middle school students failed three or more courses. And then knowing what our parents said, 75% of those we surveyed, who were high school online students, said, my student plans to go on to a two- or four-year college. And 79% said the pacing and content is too easy, easy, or neutral. So when we think about being prepared for college and what's beyond high school, having content that's too easy, easy, or kind of neutral doesn't set our students up for the kind of challenge they might encounter after high school. And then we continue with a couple more data points. One of the biggest suggestions in the open comments from parents was more live classes and more one-on-one teacher time. So when I think about how that's possible, it would be having more staff members situated as online teachers because their day is truly very packed with one-on-one meetings and live instruction. So we do have a time constraint there. The biggest challenge that parents indicated from our online students was mental health concerns and feeling inadequate to teach as a, I'm a home teacher because I'm monitoring my kids from home and having to moderate their learning. Teachers suggested these different challenges. There's a variety of parent capacity for facilitating online learning and the technology demands. It's difficult to track to true progress. And we've talked about that before at board meetings, where we're not sure, is that an assessment of what the parent is doing or what the student is doing? So it just makes it difficult to get a true sense of progress. The teacher shared with me today, it's almost like teaching in 30 different classrooms because you're zooming into 30 different homes, and the environments are so varied that it makes learning a bit complex. Truancy has been a concern from the beginning, and you've heard us talk about that at board meetings as well, and that difference between attendance and engagement. And this year, we've been afforded some flexibility with attendance, but that doesn't necessarily equate high-quality engagement. You know, in Northern Kent County, that digital connectivity and access to stable internet is a concern. And we've tried to address that with hotspots, but it doesn't always meet the mark for live lessons. And then teachers also shared through tiers today the mental health and well-being concerns they have for their students, who they normally would be able to see and wrap around. So when I look at that data set, it really doesn't settle well on my heart and soul as an educator. It makes me uncomfortable to think about widening gaps and opportunities that might be missed because we're offering an online program and recognizing that it was in response to a pandemic, a global pandemic, and that our teachers are doing the very best that they can. And so are our parents, and our students are trying really hard too. And it's very complex, as we heard our student council reps say, you know, it's really hard right now because COVID. Education Week recently put out an article saying that, you know, it's not surprising that in-person courses are more effective than online courses. That's what we would have predicted. And what we said from the beginning is, we know the best place for our kids is in a classroom with a high-quality teacher every single day. But they are finding that, on average, students do worse in an online setting, especially those who already struggle. And as we're working hard to bridge gaps, I'm not sure that going forward, it makes a lot of sense to continue to create a situation where we're widening gaps. So looking at health predictions, because one of the many reasons that families might have chosen to do an online school option is because of the health condition and the requirements as a result of that. In the COVID cases chart, this is from Kent County in particular, through the Kent County My Access, sharing several different scenarios about the COVID cases. And they only will predict out to March, but all but about two of those possible scenarios indicates that our trends are heading down for number of COVID cases. Like Scott said, we're trending in the right direction, especially in Cedar Springs. And then when we look at the status of the vaccine, that brown line indicates the mark between August and September. And you can see that the concentration of vaccinations for anyone in groups 1A, 1B, and 1C, including group two as well, the vaccine's going to be available. So we would anticipate that as more people are vaccinated, the number of COVID cases would drop. So we'll be watching that carefully to see where we are in comparison to where we were in the fall in order to really make a true determination. Because certainly if we see that COVID cases are on the rise or there's a problem with the vaccine, then this, the scenario might shift or change for us. So our recommendation at this time, and as Scott Smith likes to say, at 7:09 on today, with the information that we currently have, I think we would like to concentrate our efforts toward our in-person schooling because we know we're going to have significant gaps to deal with. We'd like to really think about discontinuing a broad K-12 option for online. And there are a couple other pieces that might be important to the conversation. And one of those is that we are operating under some very flexible attendance rules this year that will probably not be in place in the fall. And so if we were to do some continuation of a broad option of K-12 online options, we would have to consider filing some waivers and considering some different rules than we've been operating under this year. We'd also like to work to define the appropriate use of secondary online options. We do recognize that there is a, as John Willett said today, a niche group of students who may have seen incredible benefits from this. And discerning when is the right time to offer that as an option for that small slice, not as a broad offering, but more as a prescriptive offering, would fall in line with the work that we were planning pre-COVID when we talked about Graduation Alliance in Tier Four. As we've totally lost these kids, let's get them back engaged somehow and help them to get a high school diploma. And then moving down that continuum toward more seat time in our traditional classrooms, there may be an opportunity in that in-between those two spaces where there are some students who, for mental health reasons or other health reasons, might benefit from some prescriptive online offerings. So that's the end of my spiel, and I would be glad to answer any questions you might have.
So Jen, I really appreciate all of that. That was very, very helpful. And even though it wasn't all great news or some good trends, I do really think it is very crucial information. So thank you for putting that together. And you kind of already alluded to this, but just wanted to clarify. So the biggest concern that you saw from this information was really that widening gap? Is that what you would say? Or is there something even like more specific that you would comment on as the most concerning?
Well, definitely, Tracy, that's a great question. And at the K5 level in particular, if students are losing out on the ability to firmly learn how to read, we know, the research is very clear about what that means going forward into their lives. And it's something that we're working very hard to correct for all of our students. I would hate to create a situation in which we are working against ourselves by doing something that is preventing them from having the opportunity to be literate human beings going forward into their lives. So for me, that data point, and as a former English teacher also, that data point speaks loud and clear to me. But the research is very clear about what happens when a student isn't able to learn to read. And so I, you know, as a district office team, we've talked about this for a couple of weeks now, just wrestling with what's the, what's the right thing to do, the best thing to do, the, you know, the thing that's going to serve our students the best. And we really do know that that's a controlled environment in person where we get to see them. You know, when we see parents saying, we'd like more live instruction and more one-on-one attention. Well, we can give you that when you're in person. We can give you lots and lots of that. And that's where our sweet spot is. This year has felt very divided because we are trying to do both things. And so we want to try to do the right thing as best as we can.
So to go to the high school piece, overall, we have mental health concerns. And so we have, we have the loss of learning or, but then we have the absenteeism piece. And then we're, we are concerned about the content. How are we going to balance that with wanting kids wanting to go to school, balancing the mental health piece with, I mean, with the catch-up being appropriate and not overburdened some so we lose kids?
Heidi, I'm not sure if I'm following your question.
Um, are we going to just pour it on and say we're going to catch you up today? Or how is that going to be balanced for students' mental health?
Gotcha. So that was one of the last things that I talked about with the online teachers today. And I had a conversation with several high school teachers last week about this very thing. And the concern is, you know, normally we would teach this much. And this year, the kids have learned this much. So we can't now give them this much the following year. What we'll need to do, and there are starting to be more national guidance documents that are coming out about this, is more prioritization, where we look at how do standards web across a student's school experience and prioritizing those and helping our team to say, okay, we're going to prioritize these standards, and we're going to let go of these, which is going to mean some substantial work with our secondary teachers. But it's also a situation at the elementary. But it's also a situation at the elementary, frankly. You know, I heard today a second grade teacher say, I hear that these first graders you're going to be sending me next year are going to be behind too. And so I need to think about what does that mean when they start? We've started some priority standard vertical alignment work to say, what are the prerequisites coming into your grade level? And then what are the things that you guarantee they're going to learn? And that has to be a manageable amount. And we'll be looking at that K-12 so that we can look from subject to subject to subject to see how it scales up and making sure that we have something that's manageable. And I think our, our teachers are asking that same question. So it will be work that we have ahead of us.
And I think Heidi, that your question is at the crux of the debate right now that really is echoing throughout the state. Dr. Rice came out last week and said that, you know, school districts should add days to the annual calendar and they should blanket, you know, apply a longer school day to learning. And the, the reality is, is that our students will need varying degrees of support as they move forward. Some are going to be up to speed and, and really not have incurred any significant learning loss during the pandemic. Others will need much more significant adjustment or in addition, a significant degree of support as they move forward over the next, you know, handful of school years in order to get themselves caught back up. For so, so for some of our students at the high school, it may mean some extended learning during the summer. Or, you know, maybe instead of taking six or 12 classes over the course of the year, they take 14. Or, you know, we're going to have to get creative to provide that balance. But we know that we can't, you know, it's like an athlete training for a race. You can't, if they're behind, they can only run so fast. Right? And if you chase them or push them too hard, they're going to, to your point, drop out of the race. And we don't want that. So it's about pacing and providing supports differentiated based on the need of the student.
And Heidi, to that point too, our NTSS process that you often hear us talk about is a data collection mechanism in order to decide how best to respond going forward. So from the behavior standpoint, the mental health standpoint and the academic standpoint, we'll be collecting data about that and reflecting on it regularly in order to make a thoughtful plan going forward.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for asking that.
Are we planning to offer more sessions of summer school and maybe different areas where we know there's a bigger spread for these online students, really not just in the high school, but kind of throughout the spectrum? I know, my understanding is last year there were some grade levels in some classes that we didn't have necessarily planned for summer school. So I just want to make sure we've kind of ramped up resources for that as we think about maybe closing the gap across the summer.
Yep, thank you, Trent. We are starting to plan for that as well. The Kent ISD will hopefully be a great partner for us as they're offering a fairly substantial listing of opportunities. One of the things that we want to be mindful of too, is that everyone is exhausted in the system. And so last year, we had a great K-12 plan that included every grade level and then COVID hit. And so it wasn't possible to do what we had planned. We wouldn't have been able to staff it. So we're looking at how we can have partners across the county in order to make that sustainable for us and a benefit to our students.
Okay, thank you very much. And then the next question I had was, I know we probably don't know some of these things, but as we think about, obviously those statistics you shared are alarming for me, I guess as a parent. But when I think about not offering that online option, I know we don't know, but a lot of questions will probably be asked. I don't think we have answers to right now. So there are doctors that are sharing that they think the vaccine is a good thing. We have other doctors sharing that they think the vaccine is not maybe the best for everybody. We've got folks that are expressing concern about some of the PPE that we're using and, and other doctors are saying, nope, that's fine. It doesn't cause any health concerns. So I know we're going to have parents trying to navigate these waters and they're, they're complicated and complex. And they're probably different for everybody. But if we, do we have, have we received any guidance on when that choice for parents might be in their hands as to whether or not they send their, their student to school with a mask and when they don't? And I guess the other question is, has there been any guidance on making that vaccine mandatory before students can come back? Or is that also still a parent's choice?
I think I'm going to defer to Scott because he's hearing the countywide conversation about that.
Yeah, those are such great questions, Trent. At this point in time, they're, they're thinking about tomorrow. They're not thinking about August yet. You know, they're trying to ramp up and get as much, from the Kent County Health Department perspective, they're trying to get as much vaccine out into the general population as, as possible. And so as far as a timeline goes, boy, oh, boy. I would guess that they'll shift their thinking to topics like this in April or May. You know, as time permits, it's, yeah, I don't know. We haven't even really started talking about that yet.
Yeah, I didn't think we'd have answers. I just, I know those questions are looming out there and probably everybody is being asked those. You know, obviously I'm an advocate. I think, I think it's been out in other conversations. I'm an advocate for putting as much control over their children in the parents' hands as humanly possible. You know, that's my preference. So I have.
No, thank you.
Jen, you, you make a compelling argument to come to the conclusion that you came to. All of your bullet points were related to your SWOT analysis, were either weaknesses, opportunities, or threats. My question is, were there any strengths that came out of your SWOT analysis?
Yep, those were the wins that I celebrated on the second or third slide. And some of the things that teachers had said were unintentional celebrations. You know, we didn't plan that there would be additional parent contacts or the opportunity to work more closely one-on-one with students. So those wins that I celebrated on the, one of the first slides were the, the strengths that we saw. They saw many opportunities for improvement, which was an exciting place to be. It means our brains are starting to be creative again. So it was exciting for them to say, well, if we were going to do it, here might be what we changed about it. Or here might be what we added about it. They were, it was a, it was a fantastic conversation with them today. I'd be glad to share the SWOT document with you. If you'd be interested in seeing it, it's just a record of their thinking.
Yeah, I would like to see that. So when you get a chance.
You bet.
So, but clearly the, the other three columns, so to speak, the weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, far outnumbered the strengths. Is that, is that correct?
Yep, and I shared with them some of the academic and attendance data that we had that they wouldn't have been able to get from a district-wide vantage point like I can see. They'll be digging into some of that data on Friday at the Professional Development Day. They asked about that. They said, you know, we really want to be able to compare what we're doing to what's happening in person and what we are doing this year compared to last year. So they have those data sets ready for February 12th Professional Development Day and we'll be digging into that a bit.
So maybe we'll get to.
Thank you for your hard work.
Oh, you're welcome.
Maybe parent-teacher conferences will look better or different out of that win? I don't know.
Yes, absolutely. I mean, I think Heidi, you know, one of our hopes is that we, this isn't a lost year, that it's, it's a chance for us to, to still improve and learn how to do some new things.
My other thinking about the attendance pieces is while we look back to where we were, the, the five days or whatever, going forward with our German virus, virus awareness, I think we need to be careful not to set that, send that message, send your sick kid to school because they're going to be five and out. I'm not that we're going that way.
No, I, I don't, I would hope we haven't sent that message this year.
This year, but if we, if we're reverting back because we're behind, because we're, you know, we're going to fix the gap, that's a piece, that's a pothole we could step in because, I mean, it's a pothole from the past, right? So we don't want sick kids at school, whether it's COVID or anything, the pukes or whatever.
Right. Just a thought. Great point.
Any other or comments, questions? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to our discussion item B, financial update with Mr. Chris Lahey in the new room.
Yes, with a new light, thank you. So I'll, I'll try to be brief with my financial update for tonight. As, as promised, I have a little bond update that'll become part of our monthly board meeting agenda or for my financial update as we get really ramping up here for the, for the bond work that is so exciting. So I'm going to share my screen real quick. And typically, typically I would make this type of, of thing, a presentation, but I just wanted to show everyone, you know, what it's going to look like and kind of explain. So on my update here, you have your year-to-date general fund budget update that you typically have that looks like this. And again, that's on a cash basis, shows our amended budget and then our year-to-date expenses. And so each month, kind of along that same line, I will be including a, a capital projects bond fund update. And so I'm going to, I'm going to put this in Board Book both as a PDF, which you see here, but also as the Excel document that creates it. And I'll show you a little bit more of that here in a second. So what I have on my screen that you can see is just our series one of the bonds. Again, we're going to sell the $68 million bonds in two series. So that'll be just over $32 million in this first series. And you can see the budgeted amount for each building. And then I've put a code with each, with each project. So you can see at Cedar Trails, we have roofing, the boiler upgrades, chiller and unit vents that we just bid. So, and we've already paid our vendors. So you can see those amounts there and contingencies and so on for each building and each project that we have. So if I can flip over really quickly, hopefully you guys can see the Excel spreadsheet. Again, this will be in Board Book. This is a living document. And it's going to live by my, my moniker that you don't have to get ready if you, if you stay ready. So as I code these invoices and, and hand them off to our Accounts Payable Extraordinaire, Barb Gust, who does a phenomenal job, I'll also say, they go right into this spreadsheet as well. So if you ever want to see how much we have allocated to each project at each building, you can see series one, series two on this first tab for each building. You can see for beach, for example, there's, there's nothing happening at beach for the first series. But then if you go to the next tab here, there's series one and there's series two. So as expenses are, are, are paid, for example, the Bull House Unit Ventilators, 121,700, we cut them a check at the end of January. I'll record it in here and then I'll have a comment. So you can see that we had $1.7 million budgeted to Cedar Trails and we've spent 12% of that so far, just on those, on those different mechanical items. And I have this hidden. If you want to unhide, you'll see as we get all the way through series one, you can see each month as we go through. And by the middle of 2023, series one should be done. So quite an exciting little spreadsheet. If you have questions or suggestions ever, please reach out to me. I'd be happy to change that or, or answer any questions that you may have. And I apologize for showing you a spreadsheet. That's not something I ever really like to do during, during a meeting. I like to stick to presentations, but I think there's value in it for this one. Going back and I unshared my screen. Let me get back to my report here. So that's the, the bond fund update, just on a cash basis. And then as I was going through thinking of, okay, what am I going to put in my update? It, it occurred to me that typically in February, that's when, that's when I report to the board on, you know, the governor's first shot at the budget, you know, what next year's budget will be. We get that, that first look. Last year at this time, Governor Whitmer came out and laid out her plan, $225 per pupil, increased debt risk funding, increased special education funding, and then COVID hit. And, you know, obviously things went off the rails. So what I did include here was a little bit of information from a state level, but then also from a local level. And I thought this was really very interesting here. The January Consensus Revenue Estimating Conference, you know, happened just about three weeks ago now. And you can see just kind of the roller coaster we were on for the, the last three fiscal years. So 1920, a year ago, they, they were, they were projecting that it would be almost $14 billion. And then COVID hit and it was just a huge, huge dip. August, we thought it was going to be better and then finished the year, 76, almost $77 million more in the school aid fund than, than was projected. So I wanted to put that on here. You can see the roller coaster for the current year and then for next year. They're still projecting that we're going to be lower in the school aid fund than what they thought a year ago when we were just roaring right along pre-COVID, but definitely light years ahead where it looked like we were going to be in May and August. So the reason I bring that up is we're still eagerly awaiting the governor's, you know, first look at the budget. But things do look to be still in a very good place for, for a foundational allowance increase. And that's not included the CARES Act or ESER funds that I've spoken about before. One other thing that I thought was, was worth noting, and I don't know who has had a chance to, to look at this report so far. I was on a presentation with the Senate Fiscal Agency and there was a loss of students statewide this year of over 51,000 students, which is, which is just really, really something. 10,000 of that is expected. They kind of budget that we're going to lose 10,000 students a year statewide, just off the nature of the state of Michigan, you know, being a declining state. But the remaining 41,500 students can be found in non-publics, homeschools, or just have, you know, just are gone and no one's exactly sure. They weren't for this Senate Fiscal Agency's report anyways, really accounted for. But so for next year of that 41,000, you know, they expect another normal decrease of 10,000. But I thought it was good news that of the remaining 31,000 or 30,000, they do expect the Senate Fiscal Agency, the state expects to see roughly 25,000 of those students to return to public schools. So hopefully we see a little bit of that, you know, in Cedar Springs. Locally, we did do some research. We had 274 students that transferred out. And those were, those were students that transferred out, but we think, you know, according to our data, stayed in the state. There were others that left the state altogether and we didn't bother calling them. But, and I put a little pie chart on here, only 5% or 14 students, family said they would definitely be back. And those are homeschool students were out for, you know, multitude of reasons. 119%, so, you know, just under 50%, if you take those in aggregate, 119 are not sure, didn't respond and said things like they, they wanted to see what happened with COVID. There was a lot of different factors. And then about 140 or 52% of those, of those students said they do not plan to return. And again, for a multitude of reasons, some moved out of the district altogether, some moved out of the state. Some weren't happy for, you know, whatever may be the reason. Some found that they really liked homeschool. So just something to, to keep in mind as we look at, you know, where we're going to be with enrollment next year. Cause obviously that's a really big part of our funding picture as well. And then lastly, and I've said this before, but 11.5% fewer kindergarteners statewide this year. And really the consensus on that is that a lot of families that had their students, had their, their, their little ones that were, they were planning on having go to school, they, they kept them home one more year and said, we'll send them next year. So really, really expecting a boom, a significant increase in kindergartners next year. And we should know more in the next month or so, as we have our kindergarten roundup here locally. So that was my financial update for tonight. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
I would just follow up on what Jeff said. Love that spreadsheet. Wonderful bond tracking, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I think it's something that, that really will help everybody. And, and my goal, not to talk too long about it, but I'd like to work with Amy McCarthy and come up with some really neat communications that we can send to the community, you know, tie some really nice charts and graphs to that, but use that kind of as the driving factor so we can really show where we're at and where we're saving, hopefully.
Any other questions from the board? Comments?
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, we'll move on to discussion C, 105C Schools of Choice and the Kent ISD Collaboration Program with Chris again. with Chris again.
Okay, so this is one of those things I won't belabor, uh, it's, it's come to be a traditional item, uh, and that's our school of choice. Uh, so, we have the collaborative agreement with all the Kent ISD schools, um, so that's the same as years past. And then there's also the one oh five C and one oh, section one oh five C and section one oh five, uh, for uh, schools of choice as well. So, um, I'll show, I'll put this up here real quick, and of course, I had to tie a little data to it, um, just because that, that's where the fun lies. So this is the, um, this is the resolution that you all should, well, you see it once a year and should recognize. So, just to recap, section one oh five is school of choice for, for students that are in Kent County. And so, all the, all the districts in Kent County opt out of section one oh five, uh, because we do a collaborative agreement where the school of choice, um, requests go through the intermediate school district, and it becomes a much more fair, equitable, uh, process, as I'm sure you know. So we, we will opt out of that as in years past. As I scroll down, section one oh five C, uh, is school of choice for, for residents of contiguous counties to Kent County, so Nuego County, Allegan County, Ottawa County, um, those students. And so we opt into that because we accept those students, uh, after a quick, um, application process, and then we will opt into the Kent ISD Collaborative Schools of Choice Program. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions, I know Scott has, has knowledge of this as well and can answer. But, um, that's the same as in years past, and I did wanna just throw this in there. I ran a little bit of, of, uh, data out of IDEXX just to show, um, this was for nineteen twenty, so last school year. Just where our, our, our net change was, you know, students gained, students lost. As you look at it, our, our one oh five C, so those students from the contiguous counties, uh, Tri-County, um, Lakeview, Mount Calm, Greenville, those are where we're really picking up net gains. But we are, we are net negative to Rockford, slightly to Sparta. Berry and Springs shows up, and that's always a strange one, but that's Success Virtual Learning Academy over on Alpine. Uh, I don't know if you guys have spoken about that before, they charter that, so that's where those students have left to. So, just a little snapshot there, I won't go into it anymore, but if you have any questions, we can definitely answer them. And this is just up for discussion tonight, uh, we would take action to approve the resolution on February twenty-two.
Chris, by not opting into one oh five, um, that kind of limits the students who can choose us through, uh, school of choice, right, for the ones that are not in Kent County?
So, by not opting into section one oh five, um, we are, that's just for students in Kent County, section one oh five. So by opting out of that, we're just basically, we're still taking students from in the county, but we're doing it through the collaborative, um, Kent County Agreement, which is just, um, I, I did include this resolution uh, in Board Book, and it, it really kind of goes through this Kent ISD, um, plan, so to speak. You know, it's really just a way for all the districts in Kent County to kind of play nice in the sandbox, not be ruthless about taking other district students, um, so, and it limits the number of spaces every year, you know. So, obviously, if a student starts in the district, they're in that district until they either request to be out, they don't have to keep applying or anything of that nature. So we're opting out of, of one oh five because Kent ISD has this collaborative plan. Uh, but we're opting into one oh five C, so we have as many spots available to students from, from neighboring counties as possible. Does that answer the question?
It does, I just was thinking if, if that graph you shared just a minute ago was fifty-two percent or forty-nine percent, the hundred and forty-one students saying they will not return. You know, we made some open seats, and, and at the same time, we're revamping these buildings through the bond to create more seats. I, I just wanted to make sure we had a way to fill them, so, wanted to make sure that, uh, these options give us the most opportunity to be able to fill those seats.
Yeah, that's a great question, and we can, Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, but the district can, can determine how many spots we want to make available through the collaborative agreement. So, in years past, we've done a hundred spots, uh, last year, we filled sixty of them, um, so we didn't max it out. But that would be something that we can look at, you know, to increase if, if needed in, in future years, too.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, any other questions regarding that for Chris or Scott? Okay, thank you, and we'll move on to discussion item D, M A S B, Region Three Board of Directors Election uh, with Scott and I. I am going to freely admit, I did not see, are we voting for one or two people?
One person.
Oh, well, okay.
Yeah, so the original book, uh, booklet that M A S B sent out was twenty-six pages long. What I did is I just went through and deleted all of the, uh, information that did not apply to one of the candidates from Region Three. So typically, what happens is the board identifies the person from their county and then votes for that individual. But we could be atypical and vote for any of the five candidates who are listed from Region Three. So, uh, it's something that we have to do, um, by March eighth, I believe it is. So, uh, between now and the first of March, we'll wanna make, make a decision, uh, in terms of what candidate from Region Three we wanna support as a Board of Education.
And our neighbor from Tri-County is running, Jill. So, but then, okay. Alright, so we'll read through that and we'll be voting our next meeting. Alright. Any other questions from any, anyone? Alright, we'll visit that in our next meeting, thank you. Okay, now we have something fun, especially after COVID, field trip request, twenty twenty-two, band Disney trip with Jen Haberling and the bandleaders.
Yes, I'd like to welcome Charlie and April, and I'm going to share my screen, and it is an overview of the trip from Thornapple Travel. So Charlie and April, take it away.
Yeah, so this is, um, uh, Disney round two. Actually, we weren't, we weren't able to make it happen, um, we'd be leaving this Thursday, uh, which would have been awesome, and I would love to leave this Thursday, it's, I would love to be in Florida this week, however, that's not gonna happen. So we're trying to run it back for next year, um, I've been in contact with our travel company that we were planning on working with, asking how things are going on Disney's end. It seems like right now Disney is really bogged up because they have everybody that was supposed to go last year, everybody that was planning on going next year, and they can have less bands there at a time because of limited capacity. She did say she, we would be able to, to go the same time, our, our midwinter break, or thereabouts for next school year, I know that we don't have a nailed-down exact dates yet. And, and those, those can be flexible if, if the calendar reflects different midwinter break dates. But she said that Disney has said that we can make it happen, um, they haven't gotten back to her on some of the, the details of their updated pricings and whatnot. But she said it's, it's almost a negligible difference, it, it's very close to what it's been in the past. So again, we're planning on doing, um, five days there, we'll leave third, I believe it's Thursday, um, after school, um, and then Friday there, we're there on Friday, we'll do Dana Park, um, well, you can read the itinerary, this is, this is what's going on. Kids are super excited, um, obviously, the seniors were incredibly, incredibly bummed, they weren't able to go this year. However, the silver lining is with our current senior class, they went as freshmen. So, they were like, you know, every, every third year, there's a, a group that gets, has the opportunity to go twice. And not fortunately, but the best of the worst-case scenario, the group that didn't get to go as seniors had the opportunity to go as freshmen. So at least they had the opportunity to go to Disney once in their high school career. This trip would again include a performance at one of Disney's concert venues. We would have a clinician, um, Disney does this amazing, amazing thing where they bring in like truly world-class musicians. I know, last time we were there, they brought in somebody who was a, a, a guest artist with the London Symphony for like fifteen years. And he sat there and we just had told, he just told like us and the whole band stories of what it was like playing with the London Symphony and playing Star Wars. Like he was on the, the soundtrack recording for Star Wars, when, when John Williams came and conducted them. And he was just talking about how crazy it was, and, and you look at the kids' faces, and they're just like, oh my gosh, am I really talking to somebody who's on the Star Wars soundtrack? Like I've listened to that so many times, um, so it's just an amazing opportunity for kids. So we're, um, we're hoping to be able to, to do that again next year. Yeah, I, we don't have an exact dollar figure yet, I know that costs should be just about what they were last year. Last year it was, um, based on a hundred and six participants, our costs were, uh, eleven hundred dollars per student and thirteen hundred dollars per chaperone. And just like we did last year, we have actually even more opportunities for fundraisers this year that we'll be, we'll be doing. And again, similar to last year, if, if the situation requires, provide, um, on a case-by-case basis, work assignments for students to, you know, if, if even after fundraising, they were still unable to pay some of their Disney fees. And that was like a, a source of, you know, that would prevent them from going, was that remaining balance that we have in the past worked with students to arrange times for them to come in and work in the concession stand during games or, um, organize the closet, or, you know, just put in work hours for the boosters to pay off some of that debt that where the boosters would cover that debt for them. So, do we have any questions about, um, next year's proposed Disney trip?
Can as many kids go, or did they cut down the number on you because of COVID?
No, we can have as many kids go as we feel we are able to bring. So we, I'm, we're gonna open up to see as many kids wanna come as possible. Go ahead, Shannon, sorry. Say that one more time.
The bundle deal.
Shannon, we can make you a free chaperone.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask a mom question, I don't, I'm not, I'm not throwing water on, on the fun. But if somebody gets sick, is there a plan, what you do with that child, so it doesn't disrupt everything else? Like is there one person that goes home with them, or, I mean, you know what I mean?
Yeah, so, so we would build our, um, I mean, praise, I, I hope to God that we're not still dealing with COVID next midwinter break.
I would agree.
Should that be a concern, um, it's something that I actually thought we would build into our chaperone contract. If this is something that comes up, you know, would you, and we would probably try to have an X amount of chaperones that would say yes, and some that would opt out or whatever, X amount of yes chaperones that would say, I'd be willing to facilitate quarantine student or get them back home or whatever, um, so adding extra chaperones or making sure, ensuring that we have enough to, if we were to, whatever, to still cover our parent-to-student ratio.
Okay, good, thank you, that, that handles the mom piece of me for that. Alright, any other questions for anybody?
I had a quick question before, I, I might be remembering this wrong, but did it include middle school as long as there was still room?
It actually didn't. No, it was high school to begin with, yeah. Sorry. Any other questions?
On this next, next board meeting, okay, alright.
Tracy, the reason we don't bring middle schoolers is because, yes, they do have chaperone time in the park. Like then, they're, you know, never without their chaperones, but you're in line, you're, you're in Disney World. So, just the, not, your son is phenomenal, okay? He truly is, but not all seventh, eighth grade boys are to be trusted in a different state for five days.
I love how you saw through my question and knew processing, can I send my middle schooler?
He would be welcome, if I can make an exception.
And he'll be able to go in a couple of years, perhaps.
He will.
Okay, alright, thank you, thanks for joining us, Charlie and April, and we'll have it on for action in next board meeting.
Thanks for your time tonight, folks.
Okay, our last discussion item is item F, Superintendent Midyear Performance Feedback. And we're following the same protocol as we did last year, and Scott, I'll let you fill in the blank.
Yeah, thank you, Heidi, so last year, we sent out a simple survey to, um, people with whom I regularly, uh, work. And simply one of those, uh, what should Scott keep doing, what should he stop doing, and what should we, what should he start doing? For feedback, just to give you some insight, uh, in addition to the things that you've been recognizing, um, that we could, uh, put on the, put on the docket, uh, for me to pay attention to over the next couple of months as we button up the school year. So unless you have any other suggestions, we'd move forward with the same protocol that we've used in the last two years.
Any other thoughts from the board? Okay, we're proceeding on as we have previously. Okay, thank you, that brings us to public comment, we don't actually have any action items for tonight, but if anybody was wishing to address the board, I think we have one attendee, uh, via Zoom that might be interested.
No, that, that attendee left.
Okay, and no one has contacted you?
Nope.
Okay, then we have no public comment for tonight, but for the record, our emails are on the webpage. If anyone from the public would like to reach out to any of the board. So we'll move on to no action items, bringing us to communication. And for the Board of Education, I don't have any formal communication. Does anybody have any communication they would like to share with the rest of the board at this time, from the board? Okay, if not, Scott, we're on to you.
I did follow up with Mrs. Johnson, uh, who made the public comment last week. She, uh, actually, two of us followed up, Mike Duffy followed up with her and just, uh, shared with her the perspectives on, um, the interaction in the cafeteria, and then I followed up with her just with a, a phone call. I'd left, tried to leave a couple messages last week, but her phone, uh, inbox was filled, but I did actually talk to her this morning. So from her perspective, things have been resolved, she reached out to you because she didn't know where else to go. Um, and I suggested she can always call me in the future or reach out directly to the principal uh, of the building in which the student is attending, and that's the quickest way for parents to get resolution or get insight on specific things that happen, uh, during the school day. So I think that's resolved.
Thank you for that follow-up report. Okay, anything else, Scott, was that your one?
That was my one.
Alright. Okay, so that brings us to planning, and the only thing we have is our next board meeting, help me out, Chris, what's the date? Twenty-second, two-two, okay. Alright, okay, so, at this point in time, we still will be in Zoom, um, for clarity and actually for the public to reach us, um, that's just kind of where we've landed. And having no other business, we will adjourn the meeting, and Verizon Time says it is seven fifty-four. So thank you, and we'll be in touch and see you next board meeting.
Very good, thank you so much.